Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We note that we have six members of the council present. Councilwoman Karen Lang is excused tonight. We'll begin the evening by turning to Councilmember Jake Fitzmao for our opening ceremony.
Thank you, Mayor. It is our pleasure tonight to have with us the Boy Scouts and the Cub Scouts from the Mapusama LDS Ward right here in my neighborhood. At this point, I'll turn it over to Brother Sahili to conduct us, our flag ceremony and the pledge of allegiance.
Color guards, at ease. Color guards, attention. Audience, please rise. Color guards, forward, march. March time. Halt, both colors. Color guard, post the United States of America flag. Color guard, post the State of Utah flag. Those in uniforms, please salute. Those who are not, hand over your hearts. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Color guards, about face, advance. Halt, at ease. Mapusama Scouts, dismissed. Audience, please take your seats.
Thank you very much. We appreciated having them here tonight for our flag ceremony. We have a group of youth here. Is this a scout group?
It is. Would you like to...
We had the other troop introduced, and so if you would indicate one of the young men to come forward and tell us three things. Troop number, what you're working on tonight, you know, merit badge, something, and then just in general, what schools you attend.
Perfect. Thank you.
You don't need to introduce everyone. So if you'll come up here to the microphone.
Well, it's 1570.
And what are you working on tonight?
Working on what?
Yeah.
To guess. A merit badge. The school I attend to is Valley View.
From Valley View. All right. Thank you. It looks like we had another scout group come in. We need one of your young men come up and introduce the troop.
Actually, he just did.
Oh, you're all together.
1570. But Yaga, you may want to come up and tell them who we're affiliated with.
Hello, my name is Yehia Shayk. I'm in the Khadija Boy Scout group. We're located, we have a location in Khadija Mashjid. We're a Muslim Boy Scout group.
Okay. Thank you. Now, is this a different scout troop group coming in or the same one?
It's the same one.
Same one. Okay. Very amazing when we have more than one in each troop. Yeah. All right. With that then, we move on. We have our minutes of March 27th. And so a motion from the council on the minutes.
Who to approve the minutes of March 27th, 2018?
Second. Any discussion? Not? Then all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes unanimously, the minutes are approved. Next, we go to some awards and different things that we're doing tonight. We'll start with the Employee of the Month Award, Don Christiansen.
Our Employee of the Month for April is Kami Makaluso. Kami, would you stand up while I read this about you so that everybody knows who's being embarrassed? She was nominated by Jenny Stebnik, the project manager. And the letter of nomination reads, "I would like to nominate Kami Makaluso for Employee of the Month for her work going above and beyond during the OnBase implementation and conversion from SIAR." SIAR was the document management system which Kami implemented citywide. And I might mention that I was one of those chosen to be a guinea pig for SIAR when it first came out. SIAR was purchased by Highland Software, and the city was urged to move to OnBase, Highland's more robust document management system. The conversion began in November 2015 and is nearly complete, thanks to Kami's arduous work and dedication, going above and beyond the requirements for conversion. Kami worked with the project managers from Highland. However, she was primarily responsible for overseeing all aspects of project management on West Valley's side, including contract signing, discovery, planning, installation, configuration, conversion, testing, training, and go-live. She became certified as an OnBase administrator, as well as a self-caught OnBase expert. Kami met with every department and to coordinate the migration of cabinets, over 5 million documents, form recreation and workflow programming, and all testing and training of users. For each SIAR-to-onBase conversion, Kami created document types, keywords, user setup, user groups, and permissions. During this time, she has continued to support SIAR and any related requests and problems. Kami has implemented the electronic plan review for CED and public works, which will soon be integrated with City Works. The conversion is nearly complete to OnBase for agenda for city council meetings, planning commission, and board of adjustments, along with the PSRB board meetings. The entire conversion process is nearly complete after two years. Kami continues to display exemplary work and dedication to continue to implement user requests and discover new applications for the city to leverage OnBase solutions. Kami, congratulations.
Next, we go to the Division of the Quarter Award for Police Training. In the police department, we turn to Steve Gillett.
Thank you, Mayor. Can we have those members of the police department that are involved in the training unit and are here to receive us a word, stand up so we can recognize you while I read the nominations? Over the past quarter, the training unit has gone through extensive changes involving program design, implementation, efficiency, cost savings, professionalism, and service to all officers in the police department and to residents of West Valley City. The training unit has transferred all classroom-style trainings into computer-based online learning courses through Power DMS, saving thousands of hours of paid time formerly required of officers to attend classroom trainings. This improvement has also increased the amount of time officers can perform hands-on scenario and skill-development-based training, making the officers and department more effective while increasing the safety of our community. The training unit has collected in surplus thousands of dollars in unused and old equipment, returning large amounts of money to the city while cleaning up and utilizing space and... The training unit has also filled four forty cubic yard dumpsters, cataloged and sold firearms that have sat in storage for years towards credit and new firearms, and continues to repair and replace all equipment needs of the department. The training unit this quarter completed the painstaking process of collecting all malfunctioning SIG P320 handguns, cataloging them, boxing, shipping them to the distributor, and clearing them from our inventory. The return of these handguns will reimburse the city an estimated $100,000. This was done while purchasing replacement Glock firearms, inventorying them, qualifying the entire police department in the firing range, and issuing the replacement guns. This task alone is worthy of the nomination for Division of the Quarter. These three examples are only a few of the many successes the training unit has had this quarter, all while providing required mandatory in-service trainings, equipment orders, audits, Kalia proofs, and all other tasks that are handled daily. I cannot think of a greater group of dedicated selfless employees than the officers assigned to the police department's training unit.
Next, we have a proclamation recognizing April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I have the opportunity to read that proclamation to you. "Whereas the children of West Valley City are the future of our state's success and investing in their general welfare, safety, and livelihood are of the utmost priority. And whereas all children deserve to grow up in a safe and nurturing environment to assure that they will reach their full potential as they grow and develop. And whereas the protection of children and strengthening of families is of concern and responsibility to all West Valley citizens because the wellness of children affects our lives now and will continue to affect us in the future. Whereas child abuse is a serious problem with 731 confirmed child victims in West Valley City last fiscal year, with each of these cases impacting an entire family and affecting the community as a whole. Whereas child abuse respects no racial, religious, socioeconomic, or geographic boundaries. Whereas all citizens of West Valley City should become more aware of child abuse and its prevention within their respective communities and to actively encourage and support parents to raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment. Whereas preventing child abuse requires each member of the community to be attentive to the problems around them and commit to doing everything they can to help." Now therefore, the Mayor and City Council of West Valley City, Utah, on behalf of the 136,574 citizens, to hereby proclaim April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in our city and call upon our citizens to renew their commitment to be educated on the impact of child abuse and join in working for its prevention within our communities. That is the proclamation. We had a brief ceremony out in front of our offices just about a little over a half an hour ago. Hopefully, you'll note the purple pinwheels that are out there in the flower bed, recognizing and symbolizing those who have suffered in our community. We didn't put up the full... What was it? 731? That's a little too many to plant there, but that's... But we want you to know that we fully support that as a council and are very appreciative of those who work in that area. With that then, we will go to the next...
I apologize, I'm out of order. But I stole the thunder of the scout troop that was here earlier in introducing them. They actually can prepare to introduce themselves, as all scout troops do. If that's... If there's no opposition, I would like to allow them to do that.
Oh, sure. Okay, and then right after that, we'll hear from the representatives here.
Thank you.
So where is the gentleman, young man that's going to come forward for that?
Come up and give us your troop numbers and what school you attend. You're shy all of a sudden.
Thank you so much.
To our microphone right here.
Oh, sorry. Sorry for turning our backs. My name is Upele Saeili. I am from Mapusama Ward. I am the scout master there. We have 40 scouts in our ward. We have 10 Eagles this year. We have 10 more Eagles. We have three going on missions. The most important thing to us adults is to keep these kids, like Brother Bigelow has mentioned, to keep them off the streets. And also to fight against bullying is the most important thing to us. So we try our best, even though we work, we take care of our families, but the children come first. So I'd like to introduce Pilamen and Kiwi. They also received their Eagle palms beyond the regular Eagle. Brother Batani.
And their arrow of light, it looks like.
My name's Tielun Batani. Where was I here? Excuse me.
And what other schools do your troop members go to?
Hunter High School, Tulsa, Scramblego, Ames Academy, Cypress High School, and Grandia High School.
Oh, okay. That's everything. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in and following up on that. Officially, next, we go to our public comment period where people can take up to five minutes on any topic they want. We'll begin with Jeff Bird.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. It's an honor to follow those Boy Scouts as a fellow Eagle Scout. And I have a son on a mission in New Zealand, so following Kiwi seems appropriate. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Jeff Bird. I'm the Executive Director of Family Support Center. Family Support Center is a local nonprofit which has been serving Salt Lake County residents for the last 40 years. Services provided by Family Support Center include crisis nursery care, mental health treatment, self-sufficiency housing for homeless parents and their children, and in-home parenting support. As mentioned, child abuse is a serious problem with 3,803 confirmed child victims in Salt Lake County in 2017. Of those cases, 713 occurred in West Valley City. Each of these cases impacted an entire family. To help alleviate this problem, last year, 1,443 unduplicated children visited the Family Support Center Crisis Nursery. There were 9,211 visits, 858 overnight stays, and 9,671 meals were served. This level of service provided 51,531 hours of care to the most vulnerable population, children at risk for child abuse. We are grateful for the time and attention that West Valley City is willing to give this very important topic. I know that you have waiting matters to consider, and I'm grateful that the safety of our children is one of those things that you're willing to take time to talk about. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Paul Nichols.
Paul C. Nichols, 53, 29 West, 4100 South. I've seen more officers here tonight than I've seen the last three days on 4100 South. So what's the problem? Which is always short, they say, but nothing's been done about it. So what's gonna happen?
Does that complete your presentation?
I'd like to know what's gonna happen. Are we gonna get any more officers or what?
So that the rest of you are aware, in our public comment period, it's not a discussion back and forth. If it's not on our agenda, typically, we aren't able to say very much. We listen to and take the comments and certainly invite individuals to meet with our staff, either right after or during our meeting. But we don't have a question-and-answer debate here. It's...
Okay, that'll do it.
Okay, thank you. Next is Mike Markham.
Hey, Mike Markham, 3008 West Alice Way. I just want to comment on Dan's proposals that he had talked about in the study meeting. I realize I don't have a vote yet, but if I did have a vote, I would vote for burying the power lines with one addition, and that would be extra conduit buried in case they ever had to go back and lay the main power line so you don't have to tear everything out again to lay those lines. Doesn't cost that much to lay extra power lines. And I'm all for, you know, let's do it right the first time so we don't have to go back the second time. I grew up with the dad that if somebody gave, told him it's gonna cost him a dollar to fix it, he'd wanna fix it for 50 cents, and that'd be mad when it didn't work. So I think if we're gonna spend the money to do that road, let's plan ahead for a little bit of possible growth. I realize, you know, we're gonna have to do some budget scraping, but I think it'd be well worth the money to do it right the first time rather than having to go back. So I could say I don't have a vote, but that's it.
Thank you. Next, Kelly Bertas.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor. I'm giving you a two-and-a-half month break, so I haven't been here to complain, cry, or raise heck and get thrown out of here. So I guess no news is good news. So thank you for everything so far. I want to talk about utopia, or utopia, the fiber optics. Now, I've never heard of this until a week ago, yesterday, when all of a sudden I see all these trucks pulling my street, and people start digging and pulling out equipment and ripping up people's yards. Well, it was fine day, and they tell they come to my yard, and they started digging four feet in. Now Friday, I shut them down. There's easements, property utility rights. Now, these people are not following any of this stuff. They're doing whatever they want, wherever they want. I understand in the park strips, yes, that's a right of way. You got 25 feet from the center of the road. Now, if you take 25 feet from the center of my road, that's right underneath the sidewalks. So that's where they're gonna have to start going. So other words, a lot of this stuff, who's watching them? Who's tracking them? And why are these guys allowed to do whatever they feel they want? You know, I'm old school. I grew up, I know what utilities are. I know the rights and all this stuff. Wars start over property boundaries. So I'd like to know, why this isn't being monitored? And why would one person be able to shut them down if you're saying, wait, you can't do this? That should be somebody's job here that's monitoring, monitoring, or supposedly monitoring. And I mean, this is going on all through our community right now. So I hope somebody could kind of jump on it and kind of look into that before there is a big battle and some lawsuits. My next thing is, and I'm gonna go back to the Latham subdivision that you guys allowed to subdevelop. Now, they split that home, sold the home, which left a piece of property. Now, apparently, somebody has purchased this piece of property, and I'm seeing pieces of equipment and trailers and trucks parked on there right now. This is a vacant lot with a garage on there. There is no utilities. Therefore, I tell there is a utility or something going on there, why are they allowed to be able to park equipment on this thing? Because you guys have zoning ordinances about everything has to be parked on gravel or asphalt and all this stuff. Well, it's not gonna happen, it's not gonna have this thing parked next to my garage where if something was to happen, where it could catch fire and burn me out. I'm not gonna put up with it, and I'd like to know why these guys are able to come in and do this. Now, this is gonna cost them anywhere from $30,000 to $60,000 to put utilities in here. So this was a choice that they chose to do, to split this and subdivide it. And they opened their own can of worms by not selling it as one single piece. So my question is to you guys, who's gonna come out there and stop this new property owner from just allowing them to do whatever they want? Or monitoring and finding out what's going on here? Because it ain't fair to myself or my neighbors to have things parked in here after 40 years of not having junk parked in my yard. I don't like it. And I hope somebody, I know somebody's wandering around there because my neighbors have probably cited for different things. So I welcome somebody to come and walk through their area and cite them. I don't even know who they are, but... Again, this is a can of worms that the city in the Latham has created. So I'd like something done with it. Again, hopefully, we can have an answer right next week. I will come to your meeting ahead of time and see what we can talk about. It's been good being off for a couple of months. I haven't had anything gripes and complaints. I appreciate the light on 4100, again, Mr. Williamson, for getting that done. That illuminated the traffic castle there from the high school to everybody else, and there's a lot of peace and harmony in that area. So thank you for getting that done. We're looking forward to seeing a light on 35th, which eventually will come one day. So thank you for what you do. Appreciate you. Thank you. Oh, and thanks for the great output for the city. This is great to see this many people. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Ivans.
Michael Ivans, 2741 Laurin Heights Drive. I want to speak to the development on 5450 West. The developer submitted a development agreement which apparently wasn't properly presented at the work session. Mayor, you asked how the presentation had changed since they were here a month ago, and it wasn't very apparent. But as a part of that development agreement or what was proposed by the developer and whether the city planner, Mr. Pastrick, had modified it or not incorporated all of the developer's standards, I'd just like to recite a few of those for your consideration between now and next week when you have this before you for a vote. for a vote. The existing asphalt on the east side of fifty-four fifty would be widened to be in line with the west line of the cement pad surrounding the existing fire hydrants and water pumps. No sidewalk or curb and gutter will be required on fifty-four fifty. That was basically in response to Karen Lang's comments about how nice it would be to just maintain the country rural feel, where there's not sidewalks north and south of this property for the sidewalk to tie into. I think there was some concern about having more people join or come and visit the property if there was a sidewalk, whether that's true or not, I don't know. The developer's amenable to installing it or not, but to maintain the trees, and I know there's a question whether those are long, have much life left to them, it would be better for the trees for there not to be a curb and gutter. Whether there's a sidewalk behind them, it may be another question. I'd like to speak just a second to the question of what does the city benefit by approving the zone change? With the developer-submitted development agreement, the city is assured the preservation or the replacement of the trees. Whereas today, if somebody were to develop four long and skinny lots like there are to the north, they would most likely take the trees out, and the city may or may not get somebody in there that's interested in having trees. So you have homes up and down the street that don't have them. In our case, there's a list of proposed trees, honey locust, plane tree or sycamore, poplar, cottonwood, aspen, maple oak. I don't know that they've done soil tests to say what would be the best, maybe Council member Lang would know, but that's something that this developer cares passionately about, is the preservation of the trees, and that's really what makes the street special in the first place. To the north of this, you can't tell if it's a quarter-acre lot or a half-acre lot, other than getting up in the air or looking at Google Maps to see what, how deep those lots are. The hundred-foot wide minimum allows for four lots. The width of this property is, I think, four twenty-five, so they could conceivably have a flag lot off the back. You wouldn't really know from the street whether there was a flag lot back there or not, because the houses would all take up the frontage. The, so, I guess the, I don't know what the process is for submitting the development agreement in a way that the council members and mayor can review it, so that they know what they're voting on, but again, the intent with the development agreement is that the city give a higher density and get some assurances that the trees are going to be maintained, and in the event of their removal or death, they'll be replaced. There's a few other parts of the development agreement that weren't presented during the work session. I don't know if the proper thing is to submit it again to Mr. Pastrick and have him circulate it, or if we can email it directly to the council members, but that's what we will do between now and next week. Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That's all that we had, who came and put their names on the list, and so, anyone else who wanted to speak? Okay. And though, it's pretty typical that people leave after their part of the program's done, so no concern. With that, then, seeing no further public comments, we'll turn to our city manager. Any comments you'd like to add?
No, thanks, sir. I'm good.
To the city council, then, any comments that any of you would like to add at this Seeing none. Then we go to item eight on our agenda. This is to accept public input regarding reopening the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget, and in that we would consider ordinance eighteen dash oh eight. This is to reflect changes in our budget, there are a few things that we wanted to have roll over. There were seven items, five of them were grants that we want to roll over. One is a roll over of the CDBG funds for the projects there, and one for the beer tax. And depending upon when those come in and how we spend them, we have them available, but we don't always spend them in the timeframe that is necessary, so we just roll those forward as needed. A list of those are attached to the item on the agenda on the internet, so that you can look at those. With that introduction, there aren't a lot of them, just the seven items to finalize that before you. Will this be the last one for you, or do you have one more?
The one in June will be the last one.
Okay. Then, with that introduction, then, I will open the public comment or input period. Are there any people here who want to speak to this issue, the reopening of our budget? It looks like no takers, so seeing none, I'll close the public input portion, we'll bring it back to the council for their comments or motions.
I move to approve ordinance eighteen dash oh eight.
Thank you. Property before us, motion and a second. Any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, then we'll turn to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Fatis Manu.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have on our agenda, again, a public input hearing, application S dash four dash twenty eighteen, and in conjunction with that, ordinance eighteen dash oh nine. This is in the Colt Plaza Two subdivision, final plat approval for combining lots seven and eight at thirty forty-one South Glen Eagles Drive, which is approximately fifty-seven hundred west. There were, nine lots were created there, all but three of them have been, had commercial things put on them. This last one, a medical provider wanted to put some in there, and to do enough, they needed two of those parcels. Rather than building a structure on there that would cover two different parcels, the two parcels are being combined into one. Pretty simple and straightforward and appropriate to do. That is the issue before us. So, with that, then, we will open the public comment portion of this. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak to this? Again, does not appear there's anyone here to speak to that. Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, we'll bring it back to the council for their action.
Mayor, I move for approval of ordinance eighteen dash zero nine.
Second.
Property before us. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Fatis Manu.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, next, we go to some resolutions. We have resolution eighteen dash thirty-four. This is to purchase five X-series cardiac monitors from Zoll Medical Corporation for use by the fire department. And these are replacement, this will come from the ambulance fund, and it's a hundred and fifty-eight thousand fifty-seven dollars. And there'll be lease purchase agreement, it said, on this, I guess. This was, these are needed, of course, we provide medical services through the fire department for many of the people in West Valley. These will replace older ones, and so they're critical to keeping up with medical needs. That's probably enough. The aging models, they can't even get parts for, so it's probably time anyway. So, that's what the issue is before us. This one, there is not a public comment period, so we just turn to the council for their comments or action.
I move for approval, resolution eighteen dash thirty-four.
Second.
It's property before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Fatis Manu.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we have resolution eighteen dash thirty-five. This is a cooperative agreement between our city and UDOT for the Mountain View Corridor from fifty-four hundred south to forty-one hundred south. This is the new portion that was just opened up recently, and as is typical with these, there were a number of items that needed to happen. Let's see, we're conveying certain city rights away for widening forty-one hundred south, et cetera, detention basins, and then the, the street just below the Mountain View Corridor bridges will be conveyed to UDOT, they like to control those, that is typical, this, we've done it before, we'll do it again. There's some roadway maintenance and access issues with them, drainage-related issues, constructing storm drains and stormwater retention, and then the maintenance responsibility on the shared-use path adjacent to the fill, and adjacent fill slopes and trail, in other words, the trail along there, along with the sides of that, the city will take over responsibility to maintain those. And then also, there's some netting along hole thirteen of the Ridge Golf Course. So those are kind of the issues that are involved in that, and we've agreed and worked that out with UDOT, and this proposal, this resolution before us will cover those items for that to officially take place. With that, to the council.
Move for approval of resolution eighteen dash thirty-five.
Second.
Property before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Fatis Manu.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, item ten, our new business, we have two applications there. The first one is, excuse me, application S dash three dash twenty eighteen filed by Tyler Boderero. This is final plat approval for the Ascend subdivision located at thirty-eight forty-six south, fifty-six hundred west. This particular property will be the location of a new charter school, Ascend Charter School. It's nine point six acres, they're dividing, oh, excuse me, a fourteen point six acre parcel into one five-acre lot, and the remaining parcel of nine point six acres. So, part of that will be used for the school, the other for future development. There will be a road connecting that to fifty-six hundred west. Klima Drive will continue on out there. That currently comes over and will be a road underneath the Mountain View Corridor there from the other side, so that traffic between those subdivisions can get through. And that's probably enough on that, so with that, I'll turn to the council for their action.
I move for approval of application S dash three dash twenty eighteen.
Second.
Property before us, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Fatis Manu.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Let's see, now, we have application S dash five twenty eighteen filed by Natalie Nichols, requesting final plat approval for the America First Federal Credit Union in the West Valley location at thirty-five hundred south. It's located approximately thirty-two forty-nine west. And so, this lot is, let's see, there are two lots there. It's proposed to divide the existing property into two lots. One will accommodate the new credit union building, the second one will remain vacant for the foreseeable future. Both zones see two, lot one, one point three acres, lot two, three point five acres, and has frontage along thirty-two hundred west. So, everything seems to be fine there. There will be shared access between the two properties, and with that, then, we'll bring it to the council for action.
Mayor, move for approval of application S dash five dash twenty eighteen.
Second.
Property before us, any further comments? Then to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Fatis Manu.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to our consent agenda, resolution eighteen dash thirty-six. This is authorizing the city to enter into a right-of-way contract and temporary construction easement with, let's see, Harold L. Goldstein and their family trust, and this is at thirty-nine eighty-five south, sixty-four hundred west. This is in conjunction with the bridge over the canal there, and this, we've had others before this, this is the one we're doing tonight, we'll have two more next week, so these are just routine items to be able to do the work we need there as we do that reconstruction. With that introduction to the council.
Move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Property before us, seeing no further discussion, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Fatis Manu.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now, I just need a clarification on proper procedure here. We have immediately following this, a, what is it, RDA meeting for, and that will take place after this, but we talked about having a closed session, so can we do that after?
Mayor, I'm gonna withdraw my request for the closed session. I made that request on kind of the spur of the moment, I find my information incomplete, and I'd rather not hold it right now, so that'll, that'll resolve your issue.
Thank you, that takes care of that. And so, with that, one motion, and we're done here. In this meeting, we will have a short meeting for the redevelopment agency board.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes unanimously, our regular city council meeting is adjourned.
I call to order the regular meeting of the redevelopment agency, and note that we've had an opening ceremony. All are present except for a member of the board, Karen Lang. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of our January second minutes. Turn to the board.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of the minutes of January second, twenty eighteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Turn to the chief executive officer, any report?
Thank you, sir, no report.
Will you please introduce the public hearing, item number six?
Yes, sir, just as in the last meeting, we're having our third quarter budget opening for the RDA, we have one item in that, and that is for the bond redemption payment for sale of land, that's two point, I'm sorry, I put my glasses off, about two and a half million dollars, just slightly over that, and that's the only item on the budget opening.
Thank you. All right, we'll now open a public hearing to accept input regarding our reopening of the fiscal year 2017-18 budget. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and turn to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend approval of resolution eighteen dash zero one.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, we'll turn to our secretary for the roll call vote.
Mr. Fatis Manu.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Bueller.
Aye.
Mr. Hume.
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow.
Aye.
Mr. Christensen.
Aye.
And Chairman Norfelt.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes our business, so I'll entertain one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We're adjourned.